Okay. All right, if I can request the planning board to review the minutes of last week's meeting for any changes, modifications, or approvals. Take a moment? I agree. Joe, I'm sure you sat up all night listening to other people. What did he say? Good evening. You good? All right, if everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes, if there are no changes or corrections, we will entertain the motion to accept the meeting minutes into the record. I'll make that motion. All right?
Set a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, we have one item on the agenda this evening. We have Nick Pousa, owner of Waffle Factory, would like to give us some additional information on his ideas about using his back garden area to turn it into a beer garden. So next.
All right.
Let us know what you think.
I've printed these out. These are the tables we're gonna be using.
Thank you.
That's fine. Thank you.
So I talked to the liquor board and they told me that the amount of seating is pretty much based on village code. So whatever you guys come up, I can do. That's what I'm, I have to do.
So how much square footage area is his back there?
The square footage, I think, is about twenty, uh, twenty-four hundred square feet in the back. But as far as that being off, I mean, we're gonna, this pergola structure right here, this is hopefully what I plan to do, what I would like to do.
That was on the side where your door is, right?
Yeah, actually, it's gonna be on the back.
Is that what you're calling the service area?
Yes, yep. So we would like to extend this exactly where the gray shadow is, uh, we'd like to build this structure around it in that L shape. And, uh, that would be our service bar area. And, uh, on the side of the fence, we'd like to make that a sidewalk out of a wood planks. We're gonna be putting stone down in the whole backyard.
What kind of stone?
Uh, little pebbles.
Peastone?
Yeah.
Are you digging up all the grass?
Uh, no, we're gonna be covering it up, killing all the weeds and all the grass that's there now, and we're gonna be laying the rock over it.
By racking the stones?
Yeah.
So you're gonna take this whole area?
Yeah, yeah, for the, maybe the backyard where the grass is grown. Because there's the ivy from the park, which is next door, the English ivy has permeated the entire backyard. Last summer, I tried, I was on my hands and knees, I mean, it was, it's, it's, the whole yard is, I'd have to dig everything up to do anything in landscape. Plus all the tables and everything, it would be too much to be cutting lawns and, so we'll be doing the, the rocks and then shrubbing, shrubbing, you know, inside the rock, so it'll look like the shrubs are coming out of the rock, and we'll have planters and all that good stuff.
Will people walk on the rock?
No, no, we're doing, we're doing pavers.
So they will walk on the?
Yeah, we're gonna be walking through the pavers, the walkway.
Okay, 'cause it was a walk.
Yeah.
All right, so you're gonna have walkway pavers, but you, the rest of the area?
Which could be, which could be wood, wood planks, though, stained, with a deck stain, I'm not sure yet, depends on the cost, all that good stuff, and the look. I might do one big walkway coming from the first gate where you enter to the back gate and make that just wood, just for the look, and then do the rest in between the tables, pavers, so.
Well, question. Peastone, pavers, loose fill, how is that all gonna work with ADA accessibility? I mean, these tables are not gonna be very stable sitting on pea gravel.
We're gonna anchor those into the ground. So those are gonna be, those are gonna, those aren't gonna move.
They'll be stationary?
Yeah.
That's the question, does ADA accessibility on loose, loose fill?
Well, as long as the main areas have accessibility, it shouldn't be a problem. Because I don't think you're gonna have, you're gonna have something in between the tables, or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
ADA is any of our disabilities, huh?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Which my building, I mean, I think, it's grandfathered in.
Yeah, well, the building isn't accessible to begin with, you know, and so the bathrooms aren't ADA, and that you can't get up into the building, it's not acceptable.
Right, but with this being literally change of use, wouldn't all have, wouldn't we have to start complying to a certain degree?
Well, to a certain degree, yeah, I mean, the, um, because this is an existing building, you look at the existing building code, and basically, the existing building code says use common sense. And so you can only do so much, I mean, you make it as accessible as you possibly can, but up until that point, it talks about how much it costs as opposed to the overall project cost, and then, secondly, what is accessible now? And how much is it gonna cost to make that accessible, so?
Right, so backyard is probably technically not accessible for all intents and purposes as it is, but with all these modifications, then you would have to make some reasonable conditions, and that's the catchphrase that says, you know, because as soon as one person complains, then that's gonna release a storm of other problems.
I get complaints all the time currently from customers that can't get in the building, you know, they call me, they complain, yell at us, I mean, not my building, you know, fortunately, that's what I tell them, you know, we help them up, you know, my employees help them up if that's a possibility, but.
Right, but I mean, it, it would be obviously important for us to say, and, you know, to at least advise you to the fact that these ADA issues, you know, whether or not they are applicable or not to the existing building, when you start modifying and adding things to it, you need to keep those ADA considerations in mind.
And I mean, the whole thing won't be stone, I mean, you know, a lot of it will be pavers, so it'll be flat surface.
Correct. And as well as these tables, I mean, you're probably gonna have, and I would imagine, some portion thereof has to be ADA, 'cause usable, because these tables, someone can, uh, they might be able to roll up to it, but there may be a certain table or set of tables that has to be, you know? So just keep those things in mind. All right, anyone else on the board?
How many people?
As far as?
There are gonna be, how many people will this accommodate?
Oh, I'm not sure, I don't have those numbers.
Are these?
Yeah, we're gonna work with.
Are these four-seat tables or six-seat tables?
These actually, uh, these actually are eight-seat tables.
So eight?
Let's say six, let's say six.
Eight times fifteen, that's a lot of people.
Let's say six, in Germany, they fit eight. Okay?
That's seating for a hundred and twenty people?
No, I don't think so. We talked earlier today about giving me the square footage and the size of the tables, and I could tell him, help, I'll work with him on where the tables can go as far as the aisleways, the width of the aisleways, and that's what we were talking about for accessibility before, that, so.
Right, so fifteen tables is the idea, but you probably don't have the square footage for that, so just keep that in mind.
Because once he puts in the, I mean, once he puts in this area as well, then you've gotta be a distance from that, you know?
Right. Somebody else?
Could you tell me how the stone wall fits into the overall picture?
Well, I mean, with that.
Well, I know, but as you approach the building, where is the stone wall?
Uh, it's on the side of the building, um, as you enter the backyard, there's a gate that's probably there.
People up.
Obviously, that's a huge, you know, picture, that's from a place in Astoria in New York, it's called, uh, that place is called Bohemian Beer Garden, that one. That's a huge place. This is obviously gonna be a tiny little door, you know, with a little stone wall, hopefully, just to, just to give you a general idea, that's what I was able to think.
That's right here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Now, that's where the existing gate is right now? It's probably only six feet. You're gonna need a minimal forty-two-inch door.
Well, it's not gonna be that big, I mean, it might be a single door, I don't know, it might not be, it might not be a double door.
No, you're gonna need a forty-two-inch door for ADA access. Thirty-six, thirty-eight?
Thirty.
Yeah, but.
I think it might be a little bit bigger than six feet. It might be like eight.
But not much more.
Right.
Right, so once you take out the space for the door, I mean, there's not much left there. Now, are you thinking that it's gonna be a masonry structure, or?
Um, I would like it to be, I would like it to be.
So it's all associated with?
Yeah.
Small residential area.
Yeah.
According to the survey map that he put, it's ten feet from the corner of the building to the property line, not six feet.
All right, well, it doesn't, there's a three-foot gate there now, and I drove by just before I got here, and it doesn't see.
I'm just looking at the survey map that he submitted as part of his previous submission, it says it's ten point two-one feet, so.
Yeah, I didn't measure it, I just eyeballed it, but it's ten feet.
Unless the surveyor's wrong, you know, it's.
Yeah.
They're never wrong.
Unless the property goes beyond the, the stone wall, which is the backside of the village consent area, so it didn't really look like there was a lot of space there. I saw, if I swung that gate open, it would literally be opening, swung the gate, it's six, maybe seven feet top, but even ten feet, you're gonna be chewing up almost, I mean, that's almost four feet of door.
Maybe ten. Is the fence on the property line, or is it in, or is it?
I think it might be raised on the front line.
All right, so what he's saying is?
Of course, the survey says.
Okay. This looks right.
Yeah, well, the current fence is there, so I'm assuming that's the property line. It was installed, this, it's part of sales, you know, because the building, the park is right there, it's kind of like an empty space, so maybe that's part of it.
Okay, so one more time, this pergola is gonna be down the side of the building and in the back. And you're gonna have a bar there in the grill?
Yes.
That's, is that, is that the current property lines? The current fence that's there?
The property go, line goes all the way back to the back of the parking lot.
But the side?
Uh, yeah, pretty much. But the fence, the fence is not parallel to the property.
It's not, is it in, out?
In fact, well, if it's, when, if you go to the, to the, yeah, the west, um, corner, it's one and a half feet on the adjoining lot.
Well, I think some of that fence got replaced a long time ago, I think, with the previous,
Is that a problem with the owner on the other side?
Well, normally, it's not, it's not a problem from the villages, from the planning board's point of view, it may be a problem if the owner of the property ever wants to sell it. Plus, he owns both lots anyhow, so it really doesn't matter.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, concerns?
No more questions.
No more questions?
No more?
Okay.
It says the fence from the, from the corner of the building where the pergola's gonna be to the fence is two point eight feet. It comes not so parallel to the property.
So what's your timeline, how you doing on this?
Uh, I'm hoping to get a Bobcat in there in the next two weeks, so we can start leveling out the land, that's all.
Right.
I think we neglected to install it, just more.
What are your plans for the changing fence, do you try?
The changing fence, I definitely, if I, if I leave it, the way it is without covering it up with like, um, they make these wood, these wood things that go in it?
Yeah, weaves.
Weaves, um, or I was thinking maybe like, to make it, get that vintage look, like a pallet wood, I don't know if that's allowed, or, um, if I don't do anything, any of that, I was thinking peanut black. Like a dark one, to get all the rust out, and I don't understand it, yeah.
Do you know if there's a height requirement for?
Uh, it's a four-foot height requirement for the liquor board.
Four feet?
And that, that's, uh.
And is that fence?
It's four feet, yeah.
Four feet, is it?
I have a law firm from New York doing my liquor licensing, and they were up here yesterday, so take all the measurements, and then we're dispensing and all that good stuff.
It'll be awesome, I think.
I hope so.
Okay, all right, any other? Good. All right, now I open it up to the public.
I have no real questions, but I did wanna point out that you are missing a seat tonight.
Oh, I was supposed to remind you, or let you know that we do not have the full board here tonight, one of our members is out, we still do have a forum, so it would be your option to say, I'll come back when the full board is available, or I'll take my chances tonight.
Take my chances.
Then at least you get three.
I'm feeling pretty lucky.
You're feeling lucky?
I'm pretty feeling, I don't know what, Chris, I don't know.
All right, no comment?
No.
Okay, all right, back to the board. If anybody else has any last minute thoughts, questions, concerns, you are asking us to basically approve or make a recommendation?
No, it's an approval.
No, approve the change of use for the backyard to become a beer garden with the structure, the pergola structures, the tables, the tables are subject to, number of tables is subject to the available square footage.
Space between the tables for the pavers, for access, all that.
And those are all building code issues that?
That Will will take care of.
Will is responsible for, so basically, um, okay, then it would be for us to make a positive or negative recommendation for the change of use and the site plan, uh, change of use and site plan amenities for, so that Nick can move forward with his building plans.
I'll make the motion for a positive recommendation for change of use and change of site plans as submitted.
With the contingencies that everything is building code compliant, ADA compliant.
Yep.
You're really not making a recommendation, you're either approving it or disapproving.
Right, yeah.
Because it sounds like you're making a recommendation.
Okay.
Sounds like you're making a recommendation to another board.
Yeah, okay, no, a motion, or?
So to approve the, to approve the change of use and also approve the site plan as submitted, or you can put conditions on it, you know, you can be specific as to what you wanted to do, paint the fence black, or, you know, whatever, that kind of thing.
Okay.
And then you also need, you also need to do the seeker motion first.
Oh, okay, all right, so let's start, a first motion, a first order of business will be to, um, declare this as type two on their seeker.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, motion to accept the site plan as presented, change of use with all the contingencies and amenities and?
Okay, I'll make the motion for approval of the site plan. And with the condition that Will will work with him as far as, no.
No, he's on his own?
No, but as far as number of people that can be?
Yep.
He's gonna see me every day. I think what you was getting to is that the actual number of tables will be subject to the further approval of the code enforcement officer.
There you go.
Yeah.
Well said, well said.
Okay, Joe, you got that? Excellent.
And it's, came right out of my mouth.
That's right.
I heard her say it, I swear.
There's a string back here somewhere.
All right, with the other amenities, painting the fence, walkways, ADA compliance, all those other issues, so, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. You got lucky.
Question about this North Ave project that's going on, do we know how long it's gonna take, is it gonna be like, uh, the road, is it, are we gonna get blocked off, is it gonna have one lane, do you know?
They're not doing anything, the road was just repaved, so they haven't done anything for the road, except, yeah, they're gonna be new sidewalks. The whole thing's supposed to be done by like July, street lights.
Oh, really?
New street lights.
The water authority guy told me seven months or something today, so I just, I don't know.
Betches?
No, it's a short, it's a real short timeframe to get this done. I don't think seven months will be how long it's gonna take.
Listen, I'm Greek-American, so I lived in Greece half my life, you know what, five, six months means in Greece, it means three years.
Pokey, pokey.
Right, literally, takes twenty years to build a house.
Okay.
I'm grateful, thank you very much.
All right.
It looks good in a month and a half from now, you guys can see it.
Okay, thanks.
See you. Bye.
We have free admission, free beer, right?
Yes.
All right.
That's not further than a minute, right?
Okay, um, no, that, that includes our official business for the evening, but there are a couple of things I would like to bring up, if I may, while we are here. Joe has been gracious enough to give us some training opportunities and information, so please review that paperwork for your four hours of training for compliance with New York State requirements, to be planning board member, and, um, I would like to give for public notice, the, we have received, I have received a number of, um, not complete, but I guess you could call them complaints regarding the AC condenser placements at North Ponds, um, New, North Ponds Four, which is the buildout on North Avenue and Kittleberger. The AC condenses are in the fronts, there was nowhere else to put them, so I did a little in-house arm twisting, and they're gonna add some additional landscaping to hide them, so, apparently that's gonna be in the works very shortly if it hasn't already started. Was that?
Why does it doesn't interfere with maintenance?
What?
Right, the code.
No, they're, I think they're grasses. It doesn't interfere with maintenance.
I think they're gonna be grasses. Huh?
Love taking care of it.
And in the wintertime, it'll be dead, so.
Have you heard about Sherry's, uh?
She's still good, she's still good. I have another question.
Yep.
We have, I don't know if this should be on the record, not on the record, but can we have like a seminar that somebody comes in and explains to us the permit, how permits our issue, 'cause none of us really understand it, how permits our issue, the costs, and what has to be permitted and what doesn't have to be, and?
That could be some of our training.
Yeah, we like an hour, we come in and?
First thing I would say to that is, when you have insomnia?
Read the code.
Open up your code book, and read the pertinent sections on that, and just, just read through the code. My section is section thirty. So, uh, read through that, and it gives you an overview of, you know, miniscule amount of what I do, and then, you know, from there, I would recommend going right to zoning, and just read through the zoning chapters all the way to the end. And then, 'cause Joe and I were talking about, um, plan review, which you could probably help with that as well, how to do seeker, we're talking about that, that's one of my favorites.
Well, David did a seminar on that.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, so I went to that.
You know, seeker isn't as difficult as everybody makes it out to be, there's basically two lists, and if it's not on the list, it's unlisted.
Right.
And when you get to unlisted, it's, you have a choice. Do we make them fill out a form, or a short form, I don't know, things like that, but, yeah, there's, there's a few more details other than that, but when you have a list in front of you, that's how you, you make an educated guess, basically, on whether or not, what type seeker it is, whether it's type one, type two, or unlisted, so on. What else were we talking about doing that I could actually do, teach, actually, make you teach, I mean, Godwin?
Yeah, we could, you know, add it to your, you know, if you wanted, Will and I could do a little overview of things. Add it, Castella, with the thread.
Yes, on an analysis.
I do, I don't know how you, I don't know how you access this, but there's one planning board overview which you can take online, you can watch.
Well, yeah, I did that.
You already looked at that one?
I already did that.
Okay.
Okay, and? All right, and the last thing, I would like to just throw this out there for thought and consideration, uh, it seems to be a recurring theme with Seaning Village, and what is going or not going on over there. And Judy has just informed me that, you know, apparently Louis has a storage trailer on the lot, kids are climbing on it, and they're actually using one of the lots as a dump site now for asphalt and dirt.
Well, that was actually from the roadway, when they did the roadway.
But that is lot.
Right, now?
It's the whole, it's HOA.
Oh, it is now, yeah, it wasn't before when they dumped it.
No, 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 it's always been HOA, he had dedicated.
Yeah, but he was the president of the HOA at the time, right?
Yeah, but he had dedicated as soon as he did the first transfer, so ten years ago, he was dedicated, so it's, it's always been HOA property. It's lot thirty, it's our lot thirty.
Oh, yeah, it is, that's right.
That's where he's dumping.
Well, then you gotta have the HOA to own the stuff.
No, he, he doesn't.
Right, so really?
You have a maintenance company and all that, right?
We have maintenance now, but if you, somebody who won't comply, they don't comply. He's not moving.
What is your recourse as an HOA?
None, other than legal.
So someone is illegally dumping on your lot and you have no recourse? I find that hard to believe.
Well, yeah, we have legal recourse, but it's expensive, there's not any money in HOA.
And now, the next issue is, there's no development going on, so?
Yeah, I know.
You know, and it seems to be, the typical tactic is pull a building permit and do nothing and then it expires.
Well, he can't pull another building permit now, so.
It's up this month, right? Yeah, that's what I know.
It's it, I think, I'll have to reach out.
Have you seen the sign?
What, for sale?
It, well, it is a build, but it's that, it's that code.
Did he get a permit for the sign?
No.
So you would've been down there, take it right down, it's worth the run.
So, I mean, you know, it's, this, this, this whole issue of?
Well, the building's just gonna?
Is the site plan abandoned, or is it not?
Is it what now?
Is the site plan subdivision abandoned?
Right, I know we talked about that.
Because of lack of use, I mean, it's, it's a slippery slope, because it's private property, he's under no obligation to develop it under any time constraints that I'm aware of. But, I mean, if you're making and leaving unsafe conditions for the residents?
And the other problem you gotta take into consideration, which is, it's gonna sound strange to you, but if I send a notice of violation for like the pile, it's going to the HOA.
Yeah, it's going to us, and we didn't do it.
I know.
Right.
The HOA owns it, so it's a catch.
Well, that's why it was done. I mean, and it's expensive to move it. We can't afford to move it either. And there's another issue, but when everything's off, I'll talk to you about it.
Okay.
Okay.
But Will's right, as the property owners, you know, if you're looking for the village for help, all he can do is go against the property owner, right?
But is it, it's not code to be able to dump, is it?
Well, if it was a temporary thing and he was gonna clean it up, that's fine, because he was just, as he was, um, removing the asphalt, they had to have a temporary site to dump it. To leave it? No.
Well, obviously, it's not temporary.
Obviously what now?
Not temporary.
No, yes.
Because they talked to you about it last year, and it's still there.
But all he could do is try to, he could force the homeowners association to remove it.
But we didn't put it there.
It's on your property, it's yours, you own it, basically.
I mean, what recourse? Legal.
You gotta hire a lawyer and, so, yeah, because what it is, this is the, this is the fine line where it's a civil matter between you and the developer. You know, it's just like when people ask me to, you know, fix disputes between neighbors. You know, all the, you know, they put their fence three feet on my lot, like, I can't do anything about that. That's a civil matter, you know, there are certain things, I can only do so much as a code enforcement official, and then it, it, it ends up being in the attorney's hands.
Okay, I mean, are we out of record?
Nope, let me close the meeting. Okay. All right, so, um.
Make a motion?
Yeah, uh, I'll make a motion to close the meeting at seven thirty-five.
I'll second, can you second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, everything's off, we're off the record.
Now it's off.
Okay, we have a problem because now. Mortgage management is also dumping there.
Oh, what? In that spot or on their spot? On their side.
No.
Because they have.
No, right there.
They're dumping in that same spot?
Yeah. So what do we do? I mean, we can't.
Is that part of your lot where they dumped, or is that that spot that?
No, it's right next to his stuff, I showed him.
I know it is, but I don't know, because if it's within that, is it within that circle area?
No, it's not, it's, okay, the, whatever, the drainage, whatever it is. And then lot thirty is next to it before you see the.
But I'm trying to think, you've got the, uh, the tributary that runs through the little creek area?
Yeah, it's on our, no, it's on, it's on, at the actual, yes.
Okay, 'cause I remember where I saw it, it wasn't too far from that creek.
Right, so it's lot thirty, and now they're dumping there too.
Because that circle has like a right-of-way that goes around it.
But no, it's in the actual, it's on the land.
Yeah, no, I know it's on the land, but that might not be your land, because there's like an angle.
Yeah, but it's lot thirty.
Well, that might not be part of lot.
No, there's a little bit, because I, that's what I asked too, is if there is like a, you know, an easement that the state has or something for that.
No.
Drainage ditch, but there is, there's, there's room, and then there's a lot, and this is where they're dumping.
Oh, okay. Did somebody contact mortgage management from the HOA and say, please stop, we own that?
No, I don't know.
Who, who's the president of the HOA?
Dad, my husband.
Well, you gotta have him contact mortgage management and tell them to please don't dump on our property and remove the stuff that you already put there.
Including?
And send them a, put it in writing, send them a letter to that.
Okay.
On another subject, have we ever heard, have you ever heard back from Maria's?
No.
Kristina?
No, I didn't hear that, yeah.
Kristi, she's.
Happening over there? I know Kristi. And she's.
The two sides got the other, they couldn't agree, you know, with parking.
What Christine's, she's really nice. We're gonna be speaking on this, because it's just, they took out the light. We don't want to put in every thought for.
I think it's all probably, yeah.
I guess Will, but that's.
They're still safe at the red lights.
You can just. Yeah, I know, it's a, it's a, it's a.
Oh, my question. I have another question.
Can we put in speed bumps?
Attorney.
Can we put, can we put in speed bumps?
God bless you.
You know they took out the light pole, no true.
Yeah, I saw that, because I called Louis on it, but he says, hey, I'm no longer.
No, it's our problem. What's that come because it's somebody with a permit that did it.
Oh, okay, so you know who did it.
Oh, well, yeah, we know who did it, but that's, that's the problem, is that they go, it's like a speedway. So we own the road. So can we put in speed bumps?
We don't plow it, so it doesn't matter.
No, we can put in speed bumps, right?
If it's a private road, you can do it where you want to. What I would do though, before you do that, just personally?
Yes.
Call the fire marshal or whatever.
Not the fire marshal, because I don't think they're gonna worry about it. I would call your insurance company and see, you know, if it's a liability. I don't know what would be here now, but it never hurts.
Yeah, because we gotta do something. It's dangerous for the kids.
And then somebody's gonna hit it, you know, going ninety miles an hour, maybe, but then they're gonna break something, and then they're gonna sue you for breaking their car on a speed bump.
Well, either that or we're gonna close it off so that they don't have access to it. Because there's two, there's three, two other entrances.
Don't know if you can do that, because it's a fire lane.
Well, yeah, but there's two other entrances.
Don't matter, it don't matter. Yeah, you're in a bad situation.
Be dipped, yeah.
Is that a big problem?
Either way, plowing is a pain for.
Well, there's something you can remove in the winter. That's what we would do, is get the ones that they remove. So they'd just be there in the, this time of year, summer. Because wintertime, if we put them down to wintertime, the way they're still there. Just a slow, it's dangerous. I mean, he went around the corner, he, he, the car flipped.
Oh, okay.
That's how fast he was going.
Cool.
He took the entire, um, just the pole, he took the entire pole out. It flipped, you know those, um, Christmas trees that are there? The cameras, the Christmas trees.
No, okay.
Yeah?
Thank you, good people.
Thank you.
Thank you.